Just a little note, a little call to order. Hi, I'm Brian Sullivan, I'm the Chair of the Howard's Board of Appeals, and welcome all of you tonight attending this meeting. So, welcome to the Howard's Board of Appeals on this date, April 24th. Purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to, you know, the bylaws of town, but on the 40B regulations. Now, it's, we have quite a crowd here tonight. Al, did you realize that our board became this popular?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person attending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize properly a member of the Board, Secretary, or Attorney presenting a case, to inform the Chair if her protocol is not being followed. Okay. Al, why don't you, would you read in our case, please?
Alright, case number 2025-21, Queen Anne Acres LLC and Mid-Cape Church Homes, Inc. Doing business as Pine Oaks Village Homes. Has made an application for a comprehensive permit pursuant to the MGL Chapter 40B, Section 20-23, and 760 CMR 56.00, to construct a five-corridor building, five townhouses, buildings consisting of 242 units, properties located at 0 Queen Anne Road MAP 57 parcel C555, Queen Anne Road, uh, let's see, C699, Queen Anne Road MAP parcels 57, H1, 0 Queen Anne Road MAP 57 parcel H0, Ennysager Road MAP parcel 57, H2 0 Main Street MAP 46 parcel M10, 0 Main Street MAP 47 parcel C1 4, 324 Main Street MAP parcel B1, and B1-0, and a parcel that fronts Queen Anne Road according to the town's GIS. The parcel is surrounded by the following: easterly direction, a butts C, excuse me, 57 C2, 57 C3, 57 C5; westerly direction, a butts parcel 53X3, 53X3A, 53X2, 53X3, and 56X4; southerly direction, a butts 56W6 located RL zoning district.
Later in this hearing, we will have a public comment period, and there are sign-up sheets at the table, back of the room, actually in both rooms itself, okay, for you to sign in that you'd like to be, you know, like to speak tonight. Also, for those attending online for the meeting, request is that you message, use a messenger or chat space on your dial-in to indicate the fact that you will want to speak, and we'll be keeping track of those people that want to speak, be heard online, My goal is to call on a few people, we can get to public speaking time, rather than have everyone line up and out the door, I'm going to be calling on, on folks, say, four at a time, perhaps out of this room, if, I'm not sure how many people will be in the hearing room B, but then we'll go to opportunity for them, and then we'll, we'll call upon people online, and we'll kind of rotate that as we go along. Now, it's our first meeting doing this, so we all need to be a little flexible regarding how we handle these things, but we're going to be taking a look, excuse me, at the best possible way to make sure everyone feels they're included in the discussion tonight, Prior to the public speaking period, there will be a break after we get done with a major part of the presentations and so forth, and at that point, we'll be collecting, see who has signed up. In preparing my opening remarks, which I'm going to have a few here, I, I did have my wife read them, and she said, as usual, you're wordy, so I just want to make sure you're all aware of that upfront, you've been warned, okay? So, good evening, everyone, welcome to this initial hearing regarding the proposed development by Pine Oaks Village 4. Tonight is the first of several public hearings to be conducted by the Howard's Board of Appeals to evaluate the project under Chapter 40B of Massachusetts General Laws, which is also known as a comprehensive permit law. Chapter 40B aims to encourage affordable housing development while balancing local needs and regulations of the community. Our role as a board is to carefully consider the interests of all stakeholders, applicant, neighbors, and of course, the entire Howard's community, and ensure that this project aligns with both the intent of the 40B law and our local housing needs, which are well documented in the town's 2025 housing production plan. There will be opportunities for public comment tonight, as well as during future hearings. We encourage thoughtful input that contributes to the Board's understanding of the project and its impact to our community. There will be future hearings by agenda, by topic, for instance, such as environmental and public health. I mention this should you have specific concerns, comments, or questions related to the project regarding that topic. The next meeting will be held June 18th at the Cultural Center at 204 Session Road, which has a meeting room that can accommodate well over 200 people. The current topic to be confirmed at that meeting will be for traffic and public safety. Chapter 40B, created in 1969, is a state law designed to address the housing crisis in Massachusetts by enabling developments with affordable housing components to proceed through a streamlined process. It allows for flexibility regarding zoning restrictions. Tonight marks the first in a series of hearings deducted over approximately the next six months, so please understand, there will be no deliberation or decisions made tonight. After a presentation by Pine Oaks Village 4, there'll be discussion between the applicant and the Board regarding peer reviews, to be conducted by independent consultants hired by the Board of Appeals. Reports to be discussed at future hearings will include traffic, public safety, overall site plan, stormwater drainage, environmental and public health impacts. The Board will also schedule a site visit for our members. Please note that a site visit will not be a public meeting, and therefore, per open meeting laws, there will be neither discussion of issues nor deliberation by the Board. At each future hearing, there will be opportunities for public input, comments, and questions. Prior to the public comment period tonight, I will then outline how we will proceed. This meeting will be adjourned at 9:30 PM or prior. Hopefully, there'll be time for all wishing to speak, but if not, please note, as I stated, there'll be ample opportunities at future hearings. Additionally, this Board will also review all written comments submitted. Ultimately, the Board of Appeals will decide on the Pine Oaks Village 4 comprehensive permit application based upon all relevant information and testimony. Our goal is to thoroughly review this proposal, address concerns, and assure the process adheres to state law while considering local priorities, regulations, and housing needs. So, at this time, I would like to call upon the applicant to introduce themselves.
Excuse me, Brian?
Yes.
Do you need to introduce the Board?
Oh, excuse me, thank you very much. I just say we're flexible.
Yep.
All right. As a matter of fact, I also needed to introduce our consultant, and I'll introduce her in a moment as well. So, please, may the Board introduce themselves? Tim Bailey.
John August.
Kenneth Dixon.
Alexander Donahue.
Brian Sullivan.
Dave Nunoy.
Chris Murphy.
Rachel Lor, zoning compliance officer.
Christine Flynn, town planner.
And also joining with us, and she's welcome to make initial comments, is Judy Barrett. Judy Barrett is with Barrett Planning Group, whom the Board of Appeals has hired through mass housing partnership to be our 40B consultant. Judy, would you like to say something this time?
So, certainly, I'm sorry that I cannot be there in person, but I'm happy to support the Board. I actually work as a consultant to Massachusetts Housing Partnership, which sends me to communities like yours to support the Board of Appeals through the comprehensive permit process, so I will be involved with you throughout at your discretion to assist mainly with procedural matters during the hearing, and, you know, assistance with some technical matters between meetings. So, I'm happy to assist you, I just have to do it remotely this evening.
Well, thank you, Judy, and I know we'll probably call upon you throughout the meeting, and...
That's fine, thank you.
That being said, sir?
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I am Peter Freeman, Moriarty, Bealan, and Malloy, the attorney representing the applicant and the team. I reside on the Cape, my office is in Yarmouthport, actually, Barnstable used to be in Yarmouthport around the corner, but in any event, I have done affordable housing and projects, including 40B projects, for many, many years, I don't want to admit how many, and every town on the Cape, all 15, have done multiple projects in every town on the Cape, and I care for the Cape, and I am involved with affordable housing, so I just wanted you to know a little bit about myself. First, I'll introduce our team, who is here tonight, I think the architect is remote, but everybody else is here who's going to speak. Bob Stone, next to me, is Vice President of Mid-Cape Church Homes, Inc. Jim Perrine, the rest of the folks are behind me, I think in the front row. Jim Perrine, housing consultant, Commonwealth Community Developers, and then Michelle Apegiyan from Icon Architects, our architectural team, and I believe she's remote, and then with us in person, Rich Claytor and Joe Henderson, the civil engineers from Horsey Witten Group. And we do have a traffic expert, we submitted a report with the application, Jeffrey Dirk from Van Assen Associates, Inc., but he's not present tonight because we had discussed through Rachel, and as you said earlier, Mr. Chairman, that there will be a dedicated meeting, June 18th, to traffic, so he will certainly come then and present, and hopefully there'll be peer review by then. So, I'm just going to make a few introductory remarks myself, and then turn over the presentation with the slideshow, which will be shown on the screens. The applicant is a longstanding nonprofit organization in town, having successfully developed affordable housing apartments over many years, Pine Oaks 1 through 3, and Bob will speak a little more about their history and their involvement and their caring for the community. I just want you to know, and I state this factually, that for over a year, we tried to work with the town in anticipation of this actual application, we've had to have informal meetings and get feedback, which is often helpful. We also did succeed in meeting with neighbors on various occasions, because we believe in outreach and trying to get people involved. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, the town select board...
Excuse me, could we not talk during the meeting, please? All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For whatever reason, the town select board told staff not to meet with us. I state that not disparagingly, but just so you know that our modus operandi is we try to talk and reach out, and I want you to know that we will continue to cooperate with you and the town and officials as we go through this process, and I appreciate, by the way, how you explained it, Mr. Chym, and I'm in full accord, and we hope it will be a mutually beneficial process for all of us. Just briefly on the site, as everybody knows, it's a very large site, it's 30.51 acres, 28.65 of which is buildable, and of course, there'll be much more on that from our civil engineer and Michelle, our architect. An important aspect, as the application shows, is that we will phase the development, that's typical of large projects, in large part due to financing, as well as other things. So, we've submitted a phasing plan in our application materials, together with a subdivision plan, which, of course, at the end, we will be asking you to endorse. The reason for the subdivision plan is that the phases will likely be developed separately, even with separate financing, so parcels have to be divided up for collateral, and so we have all of the information on that. As you know, we submitted a very substantial application package with many materials, including the project eligibility letter from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities under the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, that letter is dated April 2nd, 2025, and that financing program is one of the biggest programs across the state and the country, frankly, to help fund and finance affordable housing projects, because the costs are challenging, development is challenging, and it's not easy to do housing of any kind, but especially rental housing. Just a quick note, in the project eligibility letter, we had initially applied to them for 248 units, for design reasons and some cost things, we actually have reduced it, not increased it, reduced to 242 units, really de minimis, but I just wanted to let you know that. We also included, as is required, a request of the, for the waivers that we need for the project. My experience is that it makes more sense to hold off on those, not get into those at the very beginning, because you haven't had your peer review and a full introduction to the whole project. I'm happy to talk about them at any time, but I just wanted to acknowledge that, of course, they're there, and again, my suggestion is that we deal with that at a later meeting. And then, I don't know, on the slides, if you can move to Bob, the affordability chart? That's going to be for you, but the affordability chart?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Are there people that are on your team tonight, online, that Caleb needs to unmute, so that they're available to speak?
I believe it is Michelle, just Michelle.
Just Michelle.
And I did notify Caleb.
You did, okay, so he's also, all right, thank you, appreciate it.
This is the one, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, I don't know if that's too eligible, it's in the pack, but I just wanted to give a brief summary on the affordability aspect. So, the chart shows breakdown of the unit as per the area median income, which is the eligibility limits, and they run the spectrum from units that will be for folks earning up to 30% of AMI, up to 50% of AMI, likewise, 60%, 80%, up to 80% are all considered under the statute and the programs, low and moderate income units, so-called affordable units. We are also having households that will be eligible up to 100% and 110%, and then the second table or chart shows that a full 80% of the total of the units, 193, are the quote-unquote affordable, or low and moderate income, for eligible household, eligible for households who earn up to 80% of the AMI. And then the bottom two charts just give a kind of quick summary of, so people have a feel for it, of what the income limits actually are, which is based on household size, as the column on the left shows, and it shows, again, the categories, what the income limit is for the various percentages, 30, 50, 60, and 80. We didn't do it for the ones above 80, because they're not technically the affordable units. So, that is based on the area median income for Howard's Barnstable County. And then, because I know people are interested, and if anybody, the Board or anybody else would like a more detailed presentation at another hearing on these things, we can certainly do that, I just wanted to try to be quite brief tonight, but we do have on the bottom table what the actual rents are for those different income AMI categories, and those, just so you know, I don't see the note there, but those are the gross rents, if the tenants pay utilities, there's utility allowance that would reduce what they would actually pay as rent. So, that's just a quick summary of how the affordability works, and I'll finish with this before I turn it over to Bob. You know, with the hundreds and hundreds of hearings that I've done in my career, you know, it's really funny, and I don't say this as a criticism, I know Boards and Neighbors are interested in the guts of the details and all of that, but it strikes me often that something that is surprisingly absent in a lot of the hearings is a discussion about affordable housing and the need, and I say that just at the outset, so that everybody has this context and background, that that is the reason we're here, and interestingly, just an anecdote, because I was at a ribbon cutting for a project that was successful, a 40B in Bourne, and I was at the ribbon cutting this morning, and there were also speakers, the congressmen, and state senators, and folks like that. It's a really nice project, it's rental, there were 942 applications for 42 units, 900 folks who are still looking, and I say that just as an interesting timing, that I happened to be there this morning. So, I'll end with that, we can, as I said, talk about affordability and things like that anytime in the future. I know I wasn't really going to get into this, but you probably are interested in local lottery and things like that, when we get, hopefully, to a permit with conditions, and certainly, we're happy to do that. So, I'll finish there, happy to answer any questions later, but I'll turn it over to Bob and then the rest of the team.
Okay, good evening. In the 1970s, Parson Alron Endrith, the first Congregational Church, recognized a need for affordable senior housing, and formed a committee to investigate building such development. In 1975, an independent nonprofit entity called Mid-Cape Church Homes was formed to build affordable housing. October, this October will be our 50th anniversary. Mid-Cape Church Home is directed by 12 Board members, all volunteers. Our first development was on land off Bank Street, it was bought from Carl and Nancy Clapp. After a couple of years of permitting and building, Pine Oaks Village was completed in 1980, supplying 60 units for seniors. Additional land was purchased adjacent to the Pine Oaks site, and 38 units, called Pine Oaks 2, opened in 1990, for a total of 98 units on John Nelson Way. In the 1990s, the Board of Directors again started the process for Pine Oaks 3. Working closely with the town, land was obtained on Oak Street. POV 3 was completed in 2003 with 65 units. Mid-Cape Church Homes has a total of 163 affordable apartments, which are all counted on Howard's subsidized housing inventory list, known as the SHY list. Our properties are extremely well-maintained, any income or donations are put back into the properties. We continually receive comments from our tenants and their families. We encourage everyone to visit our properties on Bank Street or on Oak Street. Around five years ago, the Board of Directors started considering an additional property. The total success of Pine Oaks 1 through 3 had resulted in up to a five-year waiting list. The housing production plan proclaimed apartments were the number-one need in Howard's. Upon researching the need, it became clear that housing for all ages and families was the most in demand, and the state was giving funding priority to those developments. We started our quest for available land. We had several false starts, finding only parcels that had title issues, wildlife restrictions, or were in-town well-water districts. We were then led to a small parcel of land off Queen Anne Road. Through research and help from like-minded owners, we were able to assemble several contiguous lots to bind into our total holding of 36 acres. For the past two years, we have been developing a concept within the guidelines of the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities, applied for and received a letter of eligibility, and now present to you our plans.
Okay.
One last slide here. Our Board of Directors have been working diligently to make this a reality. Our Board does not receive any compensation for the work, it is all volunteer, nor will there be any kind of Board payout at the completion of Pine Oaks 4. We are your neighbors, or have businesses in town, and wholly have the best interest of the town at heart. I'll now turn it back to you.
Thank you. I think we're going to switch to Richard, if you want to, we come up here, I can switch these with you?
No, no, I can.
Okay.
While you're doing your presentation, and I don't know if this is possible, but when you're looking at a chart and so forth, although we have the monitors here of the Board, could you refer to where in the comprehensive permit application, perhaps that plot might be, what page it might be on, so we can, Board, if you'd refer to it? I appreciate that, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, thank you for hearing this tonight. My name is Richard Claytor, I'm principal with the Horsey Witten Group, I'm the principal engineer in charge of this project, I stamped the drawings as the engineer record. I, too, have maybe not as many years as Peter in doing this kind of work, but many years doing 40B and other housing, but affordable housing in particular. I just have a few points to go over. These next slides that I'm going to show you are in your packet, they're from the engineering plans, and in our slideshow, it's labeled PP 6 in the bottom, Property Plan 6. So, this, the purpose of showing you this is to illustrate that the parcels that Bob just mentioned that were acquired by Pine Oaks Village 4 for this project consist of ultimately nine parcels.
Excuse me, one second, did you find it?
That's the drawing set, Brian, I think it's...
Oh, nine.
It's in chapter nine.
Chapter nine, thank you.
Chapter nine?
Do you have smaller-sized versions?
I have that.
There we go.
I just wanted to find it so I could look at it. Thank you.
Chapter nine, PP 6 is the plan in question. What this sheet shows you is the parcels controlled by Pine Oaks Village, and then there are seven of those listed or shown in white. Those will be effectively the project, there is a line in green that you can see heading to the south that is, would be an easement over future, over the other parcels. This connects Queen Anne Road ultimately to Main Street. The, these seven parcels, two of which have been, or are being subdivided through the ANR, Approval Not Required, or Form A, a proposal process. We lost our...
No, we just, he's going to mute somebody.
Okay. And those, the purpose again is, while I stamped this drawing, Property Plan, we did not do the survey for this work, the survey work was from stamped land survey, by a professional land surveyor for the property line and topography, John McElwin from, who's a professional land surveyor, formerly with Coastal Engineering, and now with Cape and Islands Engineering. So, this establishes our site, if you will. So, can we advance the slides one?
That's right here.
Oh, I have to do it. Got it. There we go, C7. This is the subdivision plan that Peter mentioned previously, and this consists of 31.2 acres on 11 lots, those lots are labeled 1 through 5 with an A and a B designation, so that, to accommodate the five phases that I'll talk about in just a moment, and to allow for alternate financing and, as the project proceeds, so that that's the purpose of creating these lots. There will also be another parcel, which will be the road, in essence, or right-of-way, that'll be a 50-foot right-of-way to accommodate access to these 11 lots. I have... I have those exact lot sizes, if you ask and need that information, but they range in size from a quarter acre, point two-five acres, to the largest one at three point nine-five, or almost four acres in area. And those are will the, is where the housing will ultimately be located. The next slide, C-eight, is our phasing plan that was referenced in the introduction. And this includes the five phases that will form the project. Each phase consists of fifty units. Again, the total project size is two hundred and forty-two units. Each phase will be fifty units, except for Phase Three, that is forty-two units. Phase One will consist of two townhouse buildings and one lodge building. Lodge building will be thirty-six units, and the townhouse units will be six units and eight units. We'll give you a little more information on that in a bit. Phases Two, Four, and Five will each consist of one townhouse building of eight units and one lodge building of forty-two units. Phase Three will consist of one large building of forty-two units and the community center. Those are all color-coded in legend. And Phase Five will include a daycare facility up off of Queen Anne Road in green. And then Phase One will also include our maintenance building and our wastewater treatment facility in one building that's in the pink. That will be described in a little bit more detail later. The next sheet, C-nine, these are in, again, in the engineering plans. C-nine. This is our overall development plan at a very large scale, showing the, where each of those units are that I mentioned, but also including these dashed boxes. These dashed boxes are a key plan that identifies larger-scale drawings for all of the detailed engineering sheets. We have six sheets each for a site plan, a grading and drainage plan, an erosion sediment control plan, utility plans, and landscape plans. And those, as I said again, are all zoomed in, so they're quite a bit of detail. That big package of the plans of forty-nine sheets makes up most of that component.
Thank you for that, by the way.
Yeah. So you can see it, okay? And you can see we have full-size plans, and then you also, those are half-size plans. So there is a bar scale on the, on each sheet, and you will be able to bar scale. I'll show you right here. This little jobby right here. On the half-size plans, there's no one-inch equals, but it's exactly half-size of the twenty scale, so that would be one inch equals forty feet, if you want to write that down. So that, you can, you can use those, those, those smaller sheets to take home with you, whatever. If you don't have a lot of room, they're a little easier to manipulate on your table, but they're also a little harder to read. So the full-size ones are there. And that's really all I had to introduce the site and the context, and you'll be hearing more from, from the rest of us in a moment.
Just, I have.
Any questions?
I have just an initial question, and that's just from driving around the area. One of the house numbers on Main Street, which the, which the EGRS is, is, you know, the right-of-way has been provided, so I can locate it when I drive down the road. I know we're going to do a site visit, but just.
Okay. Three sixteen, Main Street, sorry, three sixteen, Main Street, and three twenty-six, Main Street. There's a parcel, it's parcel H. This is really, can we, oh, I guess I can go back. All right. So, so let's go, let's go to this property plan here. So three, three sixteen is right here, and then the three twenty-six is on the other side. This little green area, it's a, an existing right-of-way, and that is, what was the address?
You just said three sixteen, three twenty-six.
Yeah. Those are the, those are the two. So that's how you can, you can find it from Main Street.
And then on Queen Anne Road, is that, is that EGRS been staked at all with a?
Yeah, there, there will be that, you'll see. That's probably.
Yeah, that's easier.
Probably see it best here. The driveway will be pretty much in the middle. That's between thirty-seven Queen Anne and fifty-five Queen Anne.
Thirty-seven and fifty-five?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And Michelle remotely, if you can, let's see, somebody may have to move the slides.
Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Yes, Michelle? We can hear you.
Yes. Perfect. Thanks, everybody. I'm so sorry I can't be with you in person today, but due to school vacation week, I'm out of the state, and Zoom has made it possible, so I'm, I'm really happy to be here and for technology to make it so. We are a Boston-based, women-owned design firm with a mission of empowering communities through purposeful design together. And we do a whole array of work, including a bunch of housing, and a lot of that is affordable. And we, we learn sort of from the whole array of what we do, but we're always thinking about sustainability, and we're always thinking about cost-effectiveness and the long-term value of what we build. When we start a project, it's critically important to ground the work in the context of, of the community that we're in, and you all know a lot more about this community than we do. We have been frankly studying it for a couple of years on the ground and from a distance. But clearly, you know that it's a wonderful location. It's, it's surrounded by tremendous resources in terms of open space. It's relatively close to town centers with, you know, easy amenities nearby. There are cultural activities, religious, et cetera, resources. So clearly, it's a wonderful place to, to have a neighborhood. Next slide. And obviously, your community, like most, has its own unique context and character, and we've, we've really been looking closely at that. And, and there's a lot of beauty to the history, to the scale, to the materiality, and some of, frankly, some of the simple details that help and the consistency of them, I think, that we, we're looking to as we develop the, the design of these buildings. The site, as I mentioned, is, it's an interesting location because it is proximate to a residential, some residential neighborhoods and not far from the town center, but it also, with Queen Anne Road, has this industrial edge. Really, it's a wooded site, though, and that's kind of, that's the character that we want to maintain to the best of our ability. And so fundamentally, the project is focused on compact development that is working to minimize, you know, site disturbance and maximize the open space that we're able to preserve and the natural features that we're able to preserve. And so that's the plantings to the extent that we can that are there, but also there are, there are some wetlands and other resources, water-based resources, that we're clearly kind of pulling away from. And that density is important to us because it's also central to being sustainable in terms of a light footprint on the ground and as, as permeable as we can get it. And so you'll notice an eastern-west kind of orientation. It's not, it's not set in stone like Manhattan, because we're not building there. It's, it works with the contours of the landscape, but we're thinking about long eastern-west, east-west orientate, buildings that have northern and southern orientations so that we can think about future renewable energy, but also ways to control our solar orientation and, and solar heat gain. And fundamentally, then, plantings and things that help make it feel like a part of, really of, right, this, this wild wooded space that we're in, a neighborhood that is connected fundamentally and that is accessible. And so, so we've got accessible sidewalks. We've also got five percent of our units are accessible. The lodge buildings provide elevators. And so it really can allow for a true neighborhood in all senses of the word, different varieties of housing typologies, different ages of people, and different types of families living here, with community building and some other amenities that help promote that sense of their own space. And I should mention parking, parking, except parking that is proximate and plentiful, we think is adequate at a minimum, but proximate and certainly handling our accessibility as well. I won't dwell, we've heard, and I know you have these numbers in your, in your package, but it is five phases each with roughly fifty-ish units per phase and various amenities and things happening along the way. So nice and thought-through in an orderly fashion, as I think you'll hear in the coming slides as to how that phasing works. Next. So the first phase, coming off of Queen Anne Road, which is up to the plan north there, you'll see what is thought to be a fabulous location for a future childcare center, which would mark that corner. But that's not part of this first phase. The first phase is Townhouse One and across the street from it, Townhouse Two, which would really form sort of the entry gateway to the site, kind of signaling a more of a traditional neighborhood character, which is definitely what we're working toward, with buildings that face the street, which have their own stoops and have their own front doors. And as then you wind around, you start to see toward the bottom, the lodge building one, which is part of this first phase as well, and then lodge building three, which would be part of a future phase. This is a view. If you look at the map on the bottom right, it hopefully will orient you. You've come in off of Queen Anne, and you're getting a, a vision of these first two townhome buildings. You're sort of seeing them on their ends, but the ends intentionally face, have entrances on the ends to create, you know, to continue to make that, that feel like a dynamic and engaging facade. And you'll see two- and three-story buildings with pitched roofs, with, with shingles and, and, what's the word? Shutters is the word I'm looking for. A, a very traditional character, simple forms, simple and traditional forms in our townhouses. As you then move down, further down the street, now you're sort of seeing one of those two townhome buildings more frontally to get a sense of that character, the three stories at, sorry, the two stories at the edges and this kind of one-and-a-half stories in the middle. And again, individual entrances for each unit here, and they each have their own back doors, which we'll see in the plans in a minute. Next. And then the lodge building, and this is a typology that you'll see again, like the townhouses in each phase. So this building allows us to provide two elevators, fully accessible units and fully visitable and adaptable units as well. It allows us to have some central amenities within the building that are handy for certain types of living. And where the two, I should have mentioned where the townhouse units are, two- and three-bedroom units, so tending toward the larger families running in and out of your front door to your yard. These buildings tend to be the ones and twos with all of the barrier-free units in these buildings. And so this, you see, these are a true three-story, but again, trying to think about scale very thoughtfully with pitched roofs, dormers, and other elements that help to bring down the scale and modulate the facade so that it really, in character, they're frankly not dissimilar in length, the townhouse buildings and the mid-rise buildings, nor would they read wildly different in height. Next slide. Finally, a couple of typical floor plans. So on the left, you're seeing a townhouse unit plan. The town, the middle plan, if you will, is actually the living level with a front door at the planned top coming in off the street into a living room, a little bit of a foyer there and a coat closet. Plan bottom, run up off the kitchen to your yard, and then living, sorry, bedrooms up above, whereas the units on the right are more of a typical one- and two-bedroom flat unit in the lodge buildings. Those would, you know, they are on one level. They have more accessible elements in, in all ways, really bathrooms, clearance, bathroom clearances, kitchen clearances, even when they're not fully accessible units. Next. And finally, as I mentioned before, sustainability is central to everything that we do. We're thinking about it from the beginning and throughout. It's not an add-on. And so these, these buildings are designed to be all-electric with high-performance enclosures that will achieve Passive House certification, which is the highest energy-performing standard, as well as Enterprise Green Community certification, which is one of, one of the holistic design standards that goes beyond the energy and indoor air quality that the Passive House standard is going to highlight for us, and also supports, you know, healthy materials, being thoughtful about water conservation, and of course, having a light touch on the site, which you're going to go, I'm going to turn it back with that to Horsley-Witten's team to, to take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hi. Good evening. Joe Henderson, Horsley-Witten Group. I'm the project manager, and I'm a civil engineer. And I, as Rich mentioned, there's six drawings per utility site grading. I'm not going to go through each one of those, but I thought I would give an overview of the site. This plan is not in the package, but it's just a rendered plan that kind of gives a better picture of what the site will look like, or at least easier to see at this scale. So the, the plan you see in front of you, the white line is the site development area. So that white line that, that goes around is the site development area that Rich talked about earlier. The dark areas are just natural, undisturbed woodland. The lighter green that you see there is, is just open space in the, in the project. And then the gray, gray is parking and roads, and the tan are the buildings, just to give you some context. So when we look at this, as far as percentages, seventy percent of the site is open space, and that's just everything but the impervious areas, buildings and roads. And forty percent of that white site development area is remaining undisturbed, and that includes two locations within the, you know, the, the site development itself. The, the site is, has four wetland areas in proximity to it. We are not disturbing any of the sixty-foot buffers, which is the, one of the regulations for the local conservation. We do have two locations, one being by lodge, lodge two, and one being by townhome three, that do encroach slightly into the hundred-foot buffer. So we know we do have to permit through conservation in that aspect. The understory, the woodland that kind of I identified is that dark area, that's preliminary, primarily pine and oak, and then there's an understory that goes along with that. I'll have a slide in a second here, I can briefly go over that, kind of the wetlands and the, the other site environmental aspects. The, the site is also within, just barely within the two-hundred-foot riverfront of the Herring River, and that is to the northwest where the entrance is off Queen Anne Road. You can just, just barely see there's a white dashed line that represents that two-hundred-foot buffer. So with that, we know we have, we're under the conservation jurisdiction. We are also under MIPA, so we are filing with MIPA, and we will, you know, be filing with the conservation. The site. The site, it's not mapped for any rare or threatened species. So again, that, I believe the environmental report was submitted. Let me go to the next slide. Actually, before I do that, why don't I just go over some of the, the facts of the site itself? The roadways within the site are all 20 feet wide, so the drive aisles are 20 feet. Where there's double-stack parking, it's a 24-foot wide aisle. When you get into the drawings and look closely, there's dumpsters and bike racks distributed throughout the property appropriately for each of the, you know, the phases and buildings. We have 418 total parking spaces. There's 405 required by the bylaw. Those comprised of 90-degree spaces and parallel spaces just throughout the site. There's 21 EV spaces within the site and nine handicap, and that's per the ADA guidelines. All the parking is nine by 18, because I mentioned for the straight-in, and then the parallels are 22 feet by, by eight feet. All right, the next slide, this is just kind of, as I mentioned, there was an environmental report completed by LEC Environmental, and they looked at the, the forest, the wetlands, and they identified four different wetland areas on the site. The next slide just gets a little bit more detailed. Here's the different wetland areas, there's A, B, C, and D, and then they've also identified all the plant species that are within that. So I'm not going to go into detail right now, but that has all been looked at very closely and documented by LEC. I did want to look at some representative pictures. So the pictures you see here are some typical stormwater wastewater management that we would incorporate into the site. So the first two on the left are what we call like a bioretention filter. That's what it would look like planted, and those are used to treat the water quality volume of, of stormwater. So that's what we use to meet the, the stormwater management policy. The photo on the far top right is just an example of the landscaping that we would use along the buildings. To the bottom left is an example of what the wastewater treatment building might look like with, as you can see, there's some covers there in the pavement that would represent the tankage that would be underground. And the last two on the bottom there are just some examples of projects we've worked on where we've been able to keep some of the existing trees and vegetation within the product development area. So that's kind of what we would be looking to do here in that middle undisturbed area we showed earlier. Next, I just wanted to look at a blow-up of one of the particular, this is the Phase Four and Five area of the site, it's just a blow-up of that area because it represents some of the stormwater and waste, and the wastewater treatment plant for the site. The wastewater plant will be phased, phased in, the total build-out is 47,600 gallons per day. So because it's greater than 10,000 gallons per day, it needs to be permitted through a groundwater discharge permit with the state. So we would be, we've already started some of the preliminary work with that, and that's pretty intensive, requires a hydrogeologic study that gets reviewed by the state, and then we also will do the design of the plant, and they'll review that for the groundwater discharge permit. The plant is, will meet a total nitrogen of less than 10, as required by the state. As far as getting the waste to this location, to get, in the site plan, this is the far southeast corner, we'll be using gravity sewers, and we also have a few lift stations that would be incorporated in the full build-out of the project. You can see the labels there for bioretention. Those are example of our bioretention filters. They're used to treat the water quality volume, so that's the first one-inch of rainfall that usually has the most pollutants. The larger storms are then flow into, in this particular case, a natural depression. The site has a lot of natural areas on the site, and part of our site layout was trying to maximize maintaining those for this particular purpose, where we can infiltrate the stormwater in natural areas and preserve those. These areas will be used for stormwater, and they will be designated as retention areas. So obviously, in the future, they can't be filled or anything like that. Some other areas of the site, we also use underground chamber systems, and those are used again to take larger storm events and infiltrate them into the ground where we aren't able to use the natural topography of the land. Our approach to the landscape is always a native, so we'd be using native species for our plantings. There's some extensive landscape plans within the packet. You'll see typical list of plants, shrubs, and grasses, but just if you look at this picture, you can see the greener, the greener the trees, and then you can see there's, let's see if I can, yeah, so these are the trees, and then you've got plantings along the buildings, and then the two different shades of gra, of grass are like a manicured grass, the lighter green, and then the darker would be more of like a fescue mix, so it wouldn't be, need to be mowed or maintained really at all. Erosion and sediment control, you know, this project will, you know, obviously include, you know, involve clearing land, so we'll be implementing all erosion silt socks, silt sat, you know, all the different protections, especially for the store, the wetland areas. So in those areas, we may beef that up, and we, we also may need to do some form of temporary retention ponds and things like that to make sure that we're, you know, protecting all those resources especially. And I think that's all I was gonna look at right now. Peter, I think back to you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. The slide there is just, as I said earlier, to acknowledge that we do have our own traffic engineer, and we submitted the report, but he's not here, we'll cover that on June 18th. So that's our formal presentation. Happy to answer questions or proceed in any fashion that the chairman described earlier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's obviously, it's clear that from this initial presentation, there's an enormous amount of information which this board is gonna need to review, as well as which will be done during the several topic meetings that we're gonna have in the future, that we'll cover in segments, you know, each of these, these major topics individually. So that for those, it gives us the opportunity for individual board members at the board itself to get prepared and read all the documentation. I can tell you, I needed a wheelbarrow to bring my stuff home, and, you know, so gradually get into it, you know, one section at a time, as well as rest of the board. So are there any initial questions you have, gentlemen? I just want to ask right now, that, from the, from the general presentation?
Jim?
I'm all set for right now.
I'm good.
I have one question. How many of the units are actually fully ADA accessible? I think I heard the number, ma'am, from Michelle, or who may have told us that.
I believe it's 5%, Michelle, and what does that translate to?
Five percent.
5%?
Yes.
12 units.
That's fully ADA. And then I guess my next question to us to confirm, how many of the 242 units are defined as affordable under the subsidized housing inventory? Was that 80%?
80% of them, yes.
80% of the 242, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The, the actual unit number is 193.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Just to clarify your question on accessibility.
Oh, Judy has a couple of comments. Judy, please.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to disclose to the board and the community that my firm, in addition to working with boards of appeal, we're all actually a planning firm, and one of our projects, actually two of our projects in the city of Attleboro, Horsley Witten Group is a subcontractor to us. So I just want the board to be aware of that. We're not reviewing their work for you, that is being handled by VHB and other consultants. My role here is mainly to be a procedural advisor to the board, but I just want you all to know that we do have a, an existing working relationship with Horsley Witten Group on two planning projects.
Oh, thank you, to closing that, Judy, appreciate it.
No problem.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, follow up on, on the accessibility. All of the units are visitable, ADA visitable, so that means that you can get to the front door and you can visit and, and get in. The units themselves don't meet ADA requirements in terms of widths and bathroom sizes and whatnot, but every visitor can get to every unit.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Nothing for this meeting, no.
As you all know, usually I always have some sort of questions at all of our meetings. You mentioned once it's 192 subsidized housing units, it's gonna be, gonna increase. Given our town's percentage right now of, I think it's 4.8, you guys probably were that, where will this addition over the next several years take our percentage of subsidized housing?
Two points, the second of which is, I'm not sure I had done the calculation, somebody else could perhaps do it, or we can look up the shy.
Sure, I don't need you exactly.
But, but, and you may be aware of this, but just for everybody's edification, all 242 units will count on the shy for the town. And I don't know, Jim, if you have a figure handy, I could look it up while there's other presentations, because, you know, the state list, you know.
It brings us up to, the shy was about 8%.
Okay.
8%.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, thank you, appreciate that. And again, minor detail at the moment, and we'll get into this, I'm sure, later meetings as well, but regarding for recreational opportunities on the site for his families and so forth, I didn't hear anything noted about, you know, swings or playground. I did hear about bicycle racks, but perhaps, I don't know, it could be a tennis court or where are there, are these type of facilities being provided on, on the site at some point during the several phases?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, yeah, we, we glossed over perhaps a little bit too quickly the community center facility. That is a building that's going to be part of our Phase Three, and with that will be a playground in the back of that. My colleague Joe mentioned the two green space areas within the development envelope. Those will be like, park-like settings, so those will have trails and pathways through them and benches, and so passive recreation for that, for the folks that can do that. But the tree canopies will remain, so we're not clearing the tree canopy, there'll be some understory clearing for the pathways and whatnot. So yeah, a playground at the community center, the community center itself, and then these open spaces. There are also some existing trails out there, and so what we've done is all of that 40% that's undisturbed will have trails that tie into those undisturbed areas. So you'll have a more rustic trail around the perimeter of the development envelope.
Will these rustic trails be available to other people in the community to walk?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question, it always comes up. There's no policy or, or reason of not wanting people, other than the likelihood is that financiers and the client themselves, you know, there's liability issues.
Sure.
They always raise that. So, you know, we'd love to be able to say it's open to the public, but the reality is, being candid, that it would likely be restricted to the residents.
And is that also true of the eventual childcare center, that on excess capacity, would any of that be available for town residents?
Yeah. I guess on a, on a, as you said, as, as available basis, to people outside the community.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions, again.
Sure.
We're gonna get into the, into the details in later meetings.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. All right. Okay, well, it's, the next phase of tonight's agenda is discussion between the board and applicant regarding peer review requests. And actually, this time I'd like to turn that over to Christine, just to discuss that, if you would.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Do you have a microphone?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll raise my voice as much as I can.
You, I'll just take my seat here.
No, 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 we're, we're good, I don't want to be sitting in your chair.
I can sign my responsibilities over to you, it'll be fine, but go ahead.
No, I'm, Mr. Chair, we are.
You have to be heard, okay?
Sit here.
Mr. Chair, as part of the comprehensive permit process, we have worked with VHB as part of doing a peer review, and before you, you have a contract in a scope of work with cost estimates for the transportation, stormwater, and civil engineering aspects of the project. However, VHB was not able to do the environmental impact assessment, wetlands review, rare species, and public health impacts. We are working with three other environmental firms and awaiting a response from those firms.
Now, before you leave, will, will this, in case of people in, in the town are interested in looking this over, will this at some point be made available online on our website, Rachel? Christine?
Um.
This time, well, not until things, the contracts are done. Just wondering.
I'm not sure, I think that would be a question for our technical consultant, but I, Judy.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a, it's a public document, so I don't see any reason why that scope couldn't be online. I think the more you put it online, the better off you're going to be.
All right, excellent. Just to sum things up, so far, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Christine, and just so the, for the first two contracts, for the peer reviews, oh, actually, the first two peer reviews we talked about, the projected cost is $39,560.
That's correct.
All right. And I know that these will be started at some point, how, how does the compensation situation work as far as between the applicant and the town regarding having these funds on an escrow?
I, I believe Judy can maybe speak to some of the financing arrangements between the consultant and the town.
Okay. Well, I think Peter has a.
But we do work, it will be in agreement between the town and the applicant, so.
Sure. Peter?
Yeah, in essence, and of course Judy can chime in, but there is a statute that governs it, it's referred to as 53G, and I forget the other number, but in essence.
44.
Thank you. The, the, usually an upfront amount, not the whole amount of the contract, but an upfront amount, usually it's for something like this, which is fairly large in scope, $10,000 would be put into an escrow account under that state statute that goes to the town, the treasurer in most towns, you know, is the one who controls that. And, you know, then when it needs to be replenished, there would be advance notice from the contractor, the peer reviewer, to you folks, you'd ask us to replenish, and that's how it keeps going.
Okay.
Because it's not a contract between VHB and the applicant, it has to be a contract with you, you and VHB.
And obviously, your organization is prepared to, to meet these funding requests.
Yes, oh yeah, we're, we're aware that there would be peer review, absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything further, Christine, about peer review?
Not at this time, thank you.
Right, just one question, I don't, I don't, I know they have an estimated completion date of July, is that July 1st or July 31st?
I'm not positive, but we can follow, we'll follow up with VHB to clarify that.
Right, and the first topic is for the 18th of, of June, which, on the traffic study, which will, will be accomplished, we expect prior to the 18th.
Yes.
Period.
Yeah. I appreciate the gentleman observing that, I hadn't got a chance to read it yet, but in any event, hopefully, you know, if you choose them, you would ask them to adjust that date, at least as to the traffic, because, you know, we don't want to have June 18th come and go without them having had the review.
For those interested, just want to throw this out, you know, this board was required to hold our first meeting within a short period of time since the, the state issued the project eligibility letter and, and the applicant submitted their application. So there's a short window that we had to respond for tonight's meeting. That being the case, there are several details that have not been worked through or accomplished yet. So again, just be patient, we're, we're trying to be on top of it, and we'll get there, okay? All set, I think?
Yes, thank you.
Anything further, Judy, regarding the peer review contracts?
My only comment is, I don't know how the town can sign a contract for $39,000 without the funding being in place to honor that commitment. So I think what you're going to need to do, if the applicant isn't going to fully fund that contract now, you're going to need to, you know, limit the scope to the amount of money that you can commit to.
Well.
I'm just, I'm not familiar with, I've not seen this done before. Usually what I see is the fund is, the escrow account is fully funded. So it's just a question that I think you're going to need to make sure there's a tight rein on the scope.
Okay. Yes, Peter?
I've worked with Judy. I'm not sure I agree with her, but it's a moot point. I sincerely have seen it done on a roughly $10,000, and it's replenished. That said, we don't want to delay anything. I do appreciate her point. We need to know, we're fine with funding the full, I think it was 39,900. So we'll put the whole amount, because we don't want to limit the scope. We want to move forward as you do. So we'll just pay that in advance, and that's fine. You know, basically, you need to adopt it and then have your treasurer set up, set it up, because the check goes to the town of Harwich, not the zoning board. But that can be, once you vote, that can be followed up administratively without, you know, discussion at the hearing. So yes, we'll fund that in full.
Judy, who will be working with the organization to finish that process? Yourself, our town attorney, the treasurer of the town? What's the next step?
So I think I can communicate with Christine tomorrow. Town council will be back next week. It's a fairly straightforward process, really between, it's administrative between the planning department and the treasurer's office. It's just, as Peter Freeman had said, it's just a special account that's set up for these funds, so that as you receive invoices from your consultant, you have the funding in place to pay them.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
David's the biggest guy on our board, so I'll have him also follow up.
Brian, I just have one question, and maybe Judy can answer this.
Sure.
Does the board need to take a vote tonight to approve the peer review contract?
Yeah.
Probably not bad idea.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we'll make sure that, well, actually, it's on the discussion now, so it, any questions regarding the proposal so far, gentlemen, what are you seeing in front of you?
Yeah, the only, the only one I had is I do think that, you know, given our meeting schedule, that there needs to be a deliverable schedule, phase perhaps?
And I guess we need a deliverable particularly for the traffic study.
Traffic.
Which is, you're going, you're on top of that.
Yes, and VHB did guarantee that they would have the traffic study prior to the June 18th meeting. And in fairness to the applicant, we will try to provide that peer review as soon as we get it from VHB.
Okay, thank you very much.
And they will present in person as well on June 18th.
We'd like it a couple of days before the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we'd like to take a look at it before the meeting, so, you know.
I will work with VHB to make sure that we get it at least three or four days in advance if we can.
All right, excellent. Excellent, appreciate that. Okay, so, we need a form of motion here, and I guess, and if, Judy, if you hear my motion and you want to correct it, please do, but.
That's fine.
My motion is that the board accept the proposal from VHB for the first two peer reviews, and all those, I think, can I, can I have a second on that motion? Okay, does that motion need to be expanded upon at all, Judy, is that fine?
The deliverables or anything like that?
I think that's fine.
Okay, all right. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. It has approval by the board. We are on our way. Now, the next discussion, completed the peer review request, the next discussion is between the board and applicant regarding scheduling our site visits to the property, which our board itself has not discussed that individually as far as the board on a timeframe. But when would, are you folks be available to first start conducting site visits?
Basically, almost any time. Sometimes Saturdays are preferable for people, but whatever you folks, it's subject to discussion if we set specific dates so they would need time to set things up and what have you.
If I could recommend that perhaps tomorrow, Rachel, you start doing a survey of the board as far as their date availability. I'm trying to review schedules tonight, and we'll get that squared away. And, all right, Peter?
Sorry to interrupt, but Judy, you can chime in too, but I think it's not, it's not a public meeting, and you know, as I think, mentioned that. On the other hand, I think it is typically, a specific date is announced, at least that's my experience. So I mention that only so we wouldn't delay things. I wouldn't have to wait until, want to have to wait till June 18th to schedule your site visit, so if it's possible, folks look calendars now and we'll just set up a date or two.
Okay.
I do agree with that. I think that makes, that's typically how I've seen it done.
All right, so, when we set up a date, does that become, since it's not going to be a public meeting, does that date become a public record that is posted? Because I'd probably, just so we can.
If it's not a meeting, I'm not posting an agenda.
Okay, all right, so, just so everyone understands, we will conduct the site visits, but it will not be posted when we're doing it, just to avoid any problems with our opportunities others that want to see at the same time. And I appreciate why anyone would want to see it, but we're going to do these things strictly by, with the board. So we will, probably tomorrow, we'll get it squared away tomorrow on the schedule, but if all you guys can, is anyone not available on a Saturday, for instance?
Which Saturday?
Well, that's a great idea, but the Saturday makes sense for a lot of folks. Do you have some availability on Saturdays? And we can also do it through meetings. We do it during the week as well. Peter indicated earlier that he will do more than one site visit to accommodate everybody.
Yeah, most days work for me as long as it's after 10:00 AM.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
All right.
Any day.
Okay, all right.
I serve people breakfast.
I don't want to pick a date today because I don't want to basically announce it publicly.
They suggested that, but didn't that suggest that we do a date today?
Yes.
That was Judy's.
Okay, you caught me in a corner that I didn't want to announce it publicly when we're going to be on the site, that's all.
Well, that's, no, I mean, that's, but I just wanted the board to understand that it's pretty standard that that decision gets made, you know, in the course of this meeting.
Sure, all right.
It's public information, it's just not, it's just that it's not an open meeting law issue.
Sure. Well, first of all, we have, we look at, probably, one thought here is to, how soon before the next meeting do you think it's appropriate for us to walk the site? When would you guys want to do it prior to the next meeting? You want to wait two weeks for the meeting, immediately this weekend? What do you feel is best as far as your review?
Sooner or better.
Okay. So, we were looking at.
I'm not available like until about the 12th. Next Monday, Tuesday, early Wednesday morning, but then not available till the 13th.
Are you available this Saturday?
This Saturday, I think, it could be, but I think it's going to rain all day.
Okay. We should have a weatherman on board here.
This Saturday would be too soon, but after. I know that because I got something scheduled for the afternoon.
Sounds like a golf game.
It is.
Okay.
I would say anytime after the 30th, like May 1st on, we're pretty free.
All right, gentlemen, let's take a look at your May 1st calendars going forward.
13th is my first available day.
Okay. How is anyone else on the week of the 11th, but starting after, you know, starting the 13th on?
I'm not available the 12th to the 15th.
Okay.
The 17th works for me, the Saturday.
Ken, how are you for the 17th?
I'm not available, just looking, my daughter's getting married in Philadelphia, I won't be here.
Ken, you've got to establish your priorities.
I'm just saying.
Well, how's the.
We're going to have Brian for Mr. Chair.
We do two meetings.
I guess we might do two different meetings. If we're all available this Saturday and Chris is not, then Chris may potentially need to get a certain tour later. I'm available this Saturday.
It's going to rain on Saturday.
Oh, but it's going to rain on Saturday.
We can do it this Saturday.
All right, so.
First, May 2nd.
How's, how's the, I mean, how's the 10th? Oh, you're out of town, correct?
Well, to Ken's point, do two different times.
So why don't we, how's, how's May 10th for everyone's schedule?
I'm good.
Open.
All right, so we got that date for May 10th, and.
What time?
After 10 o'clock. Okay, so, go for 10:30?
Breakfast. That works for me.
All right.
Chris, you said the 10th does not work for you?
Does not.
And the 17th does?
17th will work, I don't get back from.
But for the second time, the 10th does not work for me. So could the 17th, May 17th be the second day?
Absolutely.
So go to either the 10th.
So we're going to have two dates, the 10th and the 17th.
Same time.
Same time.
10:30 work for everybody for those two dates? Okay. And I will, I will plan myself to be at both of those site visits. All right, item five. Oh, actually, do I have to make that a motion that we meet those two days, or is that, that's fine? Okay, I didn't think so. All right, discussion by the board regarding future public hearing schedule. So, you already mentioned, we only have one scheduled so far, which is the traffic public safety meeting, which will be on June 18th. And just to remind everybody, it's going to be at the cultural center, a 204 session, Session Road. They have a larger room upstairs. For that meeting, my understanding is that you'll be able to, if you want to go to the meeting remote, the remote will be available, but we do not have the communication to show that meeting live on channel whatever, okay? That, so it will not be, it will not be shown live that night, but you can see it live if you dial in, or, you know, internet in, okay, that way. Okay, so, just want to make sure everyone's clear on that, so they're not surfing, trying to find it on the channel.
Is that a 6:30 PM, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, that's my, yeah, 6:30 to 9:30, whatever it is.
And that's the cultural center on Sisson Road?
Correct. It's upstairs, the large.
In the auditorium.
In the auditorium. Fairly large room, good facility. There's ample parking in the front, there's also parking in the back of the building. And for any reason it got even more crowded, or whatever, there's a school just down the street. Okay.
And that is to discuss traffic?
That's to discuss, yes, the traffic, the public safety, which hopefully we'll have the report three or four days ahead of time to review. And prior to that, once we get the report, will we be able to put it online prior to the meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it'll be available online for everyone to look at. So, you know, check the website, and we'll have that report there for you prior to the meeting, okay? All right, so, hey, the next phase here is going to be public comment. I don't know if anyone's interested in talking tonight, but we're here for that. And let me just, we're going to take a break in a moment, but I just want to first go over tonight for the public comment, and, and no doubt, I have some written rules ready to discuss. If I could actually find them, what did I do with them? Okay.
Can I take the break?
Tell you what, let me just have that, no, just discuss it now. Thank you, appreciate it. Do I just, I might have made some changes on a second there. Okay. All right, so, encourage constructive and respectful dialogue during this hearing as far as on during the public speaking time. If you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized and state your name and address for the record. We request a comments focus on the proposal itself and its impact. The hearing should not be a referendum on the 40B comprehensive permitting process as it's established law and the guidelines this board must consider in our deliberations. We will take turns amongst the people in the Griffin Room, and I don't know how many people, it's a few in the hearing room B, but we will take turns, you know, we'll call in up a few people at a time from Griffin Room, then anyone wants to speak from the hearing room B, and then we'll be notifying people online that want to speak, that will be unmuting them and they're next to speak, okay? It, when speaking, please consider comments previously made. You know, and if possible, adjust your statements to expand upon the previous opinions rather than repeat them. But that, we're not going to control anyone's statements, okay? Everyone will be offered an equal time of up to three minutes to express views and ask questions. At a two and a half minute mark, you'll be notified that there are 30 seconds left, and actually, Dave is going to be taking care of that part of it. Any question should be directed to the chair and not the applicant, though it'd be obvious whether or not it's for the applicant, but. And after asking a question, if you do so, we request you take your seat, okay? Anticipating that some questions may require preparation to answer, the applicant or the board will have the opportunity to answer immediately or address them later, and at the end of this meeting. And if not at the end of this meeting, they will be, all questions will be recorded, and then they will be answered. And if they're not answered at this meeting, the answers and the questions will be posted on the appeals board website, so that everyone's confident it's being addressed, okay? Our goal is to hear as many opinions as possible this evening. As Chair, I like to end this public comment period around 9:10, so we're going to have approximately an hour, to allow additional time for questions to be addressed and discussion of the board with a consultant regarding the hearing process. So, that's kind of the rules. I think, I think it's fair, and I think if anyone has any objections to them, I'm happy to consider that, but it'll be equal for everybody. So at the moment, we're going to take an adjournment for probably 10 minutes, if that's okay. At that point, Rachel's going to grab what people have signed up for. If you haven't signed up, we'll do it later if there's time, then we'll, of course, hear you. Just a reminder, there are restrooms on this floor, and there are restrooms that are downstairs on the first floor, okay? So, meeting adjourned briefly, recess for about 10 minutes. Okay, folks. Now again, I mentioned, I want to keep this as organized as I possibly can here, but we'll, we'll be flexible if it doesn't work out by, by my plans. And I'm going to first initially call up four people that they can, or three people, four people to get in line, and then we'll move things over to a couple of speakers from the hearing room B. At the moment, if you're online, and I, we don't have any messages for anyone that's online that wants to speak, so if you do want to speak, please, still have an opportunity to message in that you'd like to speak. So, it's, because most of you probably know where you were in the list here from the, in the, each of the rooms, and I think I had, the first name was crossed off, and the second name, and I apologize for not being able to read it, it might be Richard, but it's 55 on Neal Road. Is that person here? Am I pronouncing, reading this one wrong? And Neal?
Neal Road.
55 Neal Road, if you could step to the podium, appreciate it?
55 or 59?
55.
55.
I don't think they crossed that up.
No, the top one's crossed off, 11 Wheat, really, okay? All right, well, I guess, uh-
We'll move right along.
We'll move right along here. We have Christine Crooker. Okay? And she's to be followed by Robert, is it Boone, from 184th Road, Forest Street? Is that gentleman here?
Oh, yeah, no, I signed up because I thought we had to, just-
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, you've already spoken, so we're gonna, you only got one shot at this tonight. All right, then after, after the first, first speaker, Barry Nunes from 221 Main Street. All right, once you, probably, if you could, could stand up, just get ready, if you could get in line, I appreciate it. And we'll, afterward, Barry Nunes starts speaking, I'd like to have, when he begins speaking, Tom Birch from 76 Queen Anne Road, to speak, okay?
Brian, Caleb, Chris.
Okay, how's it going?
We had one person who's indicated that they want to speak online.
Excellent, okay, thank you. All right. So, if you could start, and just re-stake your name and address?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Kristen Crooker. I live at 323 Main Street. My property, my personal residence is directly across the street from the access on Main Street to the, to the development. I also own a property, a commercial property on Queen Anne Road, 270 Queen Anne Road, which I run my land, my husband and I run our landscape business out of, so I can't help but think the fact that I'm in double jeopardy here. Both, both my personal residents will be affected, as well as my ability to earn income over on Main Street due to the traffic congestion, and also, I, I, my main concerns are environmental, to be honest with you. This is a lot of open space now, a lot of forest, that even if there isn't any rare species out there, there is wildlife that inhabit that area, and they're going to be, you know, forced out. And I also would like to address the fact that the access on Main Street, I'd like some more information to know whether or not that is going to be, they're referring to it as an emergency exit entrance for fire, police, et cetera, but I understand the fact that there's going to be so much congestion at the, at the fork at Main Street, and also the four-way on Depot, as well as the intersection on 124, that I'm sure residents, as a shortcut, if it's open, are going to be using the Main Street access to have better, you know, to get out of there more quickly. So I'd like to know more information about what's the, the Main Street access, is it going to be gated? What does it mean when it's, when they're talking about just emergency vehicles? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Ed, would you like to reply at this time regarding that question on Main Street, or let that go later?
No, in general, we'll respond, and I know you would like it in writing, we'll definitely do that.
Okay.
And we're certainly, because our traffic fellow isn't here, you know, we can talk to him.
Sure, excellent, okay. Well, thank you. Mr. Nunes, is that correct?
Actually, I've got two things going on here.
Sure.
One, it's some information that was sent to me-
Okay.
From Paula Miles, who lives on 163 Main Street, North Howard, so I'd like to read that, then there's something I want to say, which is short.
My pleasure, go ahead.
Okay. This is from Paula. The developers hope to build 10 densely spaced and oversized multi-story buildings in North Howard's low-density residential RL zone on 31 acres of undisputed, undisturbed pine and oak forests that contain wetlands and at least one certified vernal pool. The land lies within the zone of contribution to the Herring River, from which the town will soon be required to remove 75% of the nitrogen it now carries, at a cost of tens of millions of taxpayer dollars. Pine oaks would add greatly to the nitrogen load, Thursday is our last chance, blah, blah, blah. Most alarming of the many waivers Pine Oaks seeks from zoning law is a request that no oversight or approval be required by the Town Conservation Commission from the start. The developers have avoided all environmental study of the site. Whenever we've asked, we've been assured of a future thorough environmental study. We ourselves know that, know what lives there, the animals, birds, turtles, and rare, rare plants that will be lost when over 20 acres are clear-cut. We know that streams and pools forming the watershed of the river are fragile and require 100-foot buffer zone that are meticulously protected, but the developers want to, environmental oversight. Within the 100-foot buffer zone, developers asked to waive all oversight of tree removal and land disturbance, seeking permission to cut native trees of any size and to cause erosion into the wetlands. Within the 100-foot buffer zone, they asked to waive the requirements of revegetate or stabilize, and any denuded area of over 50 square feet. Seeking permission such just to mulch bed ground or to lay down turf logs. Within the 100-foot buffer, they asked to use fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides, fungicides, and rodensides. Residents know that heavy rain would wash all that shallow cover glop and its toxic chemicals into the wetlands, and from there, into our river.
You're down to 30 seconds, sir.
All right, so I'll say what I've got to say. I, North Howard, it's originally, or not originally, but it's been a K-Verdian community, and a lot of stuff has been put in North Howard, and I think this section of town is upheld, it's what it has to do. We've got the over one-mile development center for construction all the way down there, we've got the dump, we've got the food pantry, et cetera, all in that area. The traffic is bad. I live right on that corner of Queen Anne and Main Street. I've been threatened when I've tried to take, take a right to go up Queen Anne, to go to the dump. I want to finish.
No, you've got three minutes, that's it.
Okay.
I have to fear everybody.
No, but you said I could, I had two things, and I could read it, I stopped, I just want to finish. I just think there should be some, some thought as to the people who live in North Howard, our property, our way of living, and I, and I think it's crucial that the town recognize that, because greatly, greatly will be disturbed.
Okay, time's, time's up, sir, I'm sorry.
All right, well, you need more time.
If there's more time at the end, I'm very happy to hear you throw it.
You need more time.
Tom Birch, resident of Howard since 1980, resident of Queen Anne Road since 1991, 2004, commercial building, 1987. I've been instrumental on making sure that all the commercial buildings are kept up to snuff. I live on the corner, and a butter to this whole project, I'm almost killed every single day now pulling out of my driveway. You guys are all welcome to come over there and try to come out in the morning, part of your site visit, do some of that. It's way too large a project, we're taking an area that was zoned for 15, maybe 20 homes, and we're going to jab 242 units on it. Too big, too big for the road, too big for the woods. I do have a question for the gentleman on the board, as far as your septic plant, is that going to be from day one, or is it going to be at the end of the project?
I need, just direct the question to me, then you can sit down, okay, whatever.
That's my question. They'll answer it sometime.
Yes.
But, when I was here at previous meetings, they showed the, the water flow up on that screen with their little pointer, it flows directly from this project right to Herring River. They had points about, we're almost outside of it, but we're over it, so that needs to be considered. If and when that treatment plant, I think the board should make sure it's online before they start building anything, or open anything, and get occupancy permits for it. Another thing, when their attorney, I can't remember his name, but respectfully mentioned unknown waivers, but we're not going to bring them up quite yet. I would like the board to get those in writing prior to our next meeting, if possible.
Right, thank you.
And then, this way oversized project is going to pay 50%- And then this way oversized project is gonna pay fifty percent taxes, yet are gonna increase every department in our town's budget and manpower. And I think those reports all came to, through the process of this, um, thing. And they claim there's not gonna be very many students, you put two-hundred-and-forty-two units, there's gonna be a lot of students, we're gonna have to do additions to our school, and we're gonna probably have to build another one. It's just too big and too much, and I wanna commend you guys for doing this over a six-month period and having three or four hearings, 'cause you realize how important and thematic it is to all the people in North Howard. Thank you.
I'm gonna have Ralph, is it Farrigan of eighty-five John Nelson Way, come up next. And while he's coming up, I just wanna clarify, uh, one thing about the timing. We have to deal with open meeting laws. And once I've established, and the board's established, like we did tonight, the three-minute timeframe, I have to be consistent about that for all speakers. Otherwise, it's a violation of the open meeting laws, and I, I need to be able to, you know, keep that. So when I cut off that last gentleman, I'm not trying to be rude. I have to abide by stated laws and, and do my best to do that. So please be respectful of the fact of the time, 'cause it's not that I'm trying to cut off a statement or that I don't like what someone's saying, not at all. You know, the bottom line is, once we establish the rules, we have to abide by them for everybody. Okay? Yes, Ed?
Could I make just one quick response to the gentleman who spoke? That's not what I said about waivers, I didn't say we had things that we hadn't submitted or that weren't in writing. I said that, and we have a very specific list, as you know, and it's posted, so everybody can look. I simply said that it just makes more sense to me that we don't go over the waivers tonight, and I, I think the board agrees. So I just wanted to clarify.
Sure.
We know we need specific waivers, but they are already submitted, and they're online for anybody to look.
And actually, Matt in hearing room B, I know there's two folks in there that wanna speak. If you could have them come into the meeting room and get lined up to speak, I appreciate it. And, uh... After that, after these, well, so if we could, um, now this is Ralph.
Ralph.
State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Sure. I'll try to keep, just keep this short, Mr. Sullivan. My name is Ralph Farigno. I live at eighty-five John Nelson Way, which is in Pine Oaks Village off of Bank Street. And my reason for being here is to support the management capabilities of Pine Oaks Village Homes. We live in a very safe community. We were on the waiting list for seven years before we got into it. And we really enjoy a wonderful lifestyle, which would not be possible without the good management techniques of Pine Oaks Village Homes. And that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you. Actually, Kay, if you go on in here yet from hearing room B. Caleb, could you, um, you have someone online that wanted to speak, could you let them know they can speak now and unmute them?
Uh, Michael McCaskey.
Okay, Mr. Haskell?
Michael McCaskey.
I'm sorry.
Uh, good eve- good evening, Chairman and members of the Board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My apologies for not being there tonight. I'm gonna start with a brief statement, and then, and then I'll have a few questions. First and foremost, thank you for what you do. This land was very limited in its use, proven by past failed attempts to develop. Now with the purchase by the conglomerate disguised as a church, the antiquated forty-B laws, we the town are now forced, faced and forced, to deal with the reality of overdeveloping a part of our, our town instead of building housing in a thoughtful way, like we are doing in other parts of town. Our only control as a town is to keep what we can under town control and deny waiver requests. Herring River is the most important to me and the way that the water flows. And if you read the initial reports on the application, which I'm sure you will, they talk about heavy, heavy grading and filling. This project does not fit in the character of our community, which is evident based on the applicant's own statements about building a community inside of a community. At the beginning of, of, of tonight's presentation, representatives from Horton-Wisley mentioned future and then quickly backed off of that. It has been represented in the past that future housing on this site will happen. So they're starting at two-hundred-and-forty-two units, what are they gonna end up at? I think it's important for this board to at least look at past conversations as they deliberate on the environmental impacts. It was also mentioned by an architect in this meeting that it was close to services, which I'm not sure where the architect firm is from, but I think it's a misrepresentation of the truth. I would, I would urge this board to look at the waiver requests and keep as much of this as we can keep local, since it's been taken out of our hands from the very beginning, as the applicant hired a political consultant and a marketing firm rather than work with the town. And as this is now being driven by forty-B and outside of the control of the town, and it deserves to be in front of the taxpayers.
Rachel, do you do me a favor and check on anyone in, in B that wants to speak? Okay, thank you for your, your comments, sir. If I could have Patrick, I think it's Patrick Oden from forty-nine Kendrick, and following him, Elizabeth Hodder, after, after Patrick.
Yeah, good evening, thank you, Chair and Board. Patrick Oden, forty-nine Kendrick Road. I agree that affordable housing is necessary and needed. However, you need to look at the impact of where affordable housing is proposed and the development plans. This site is in North Howard. How many residents of North Howard moved to North Howard, what, forty years ago, ten years ago, five years ago, hoping to have this development as their next-door neighbors? I don't think any of them did. This location site is Residential L, that means light. Doesn't mean two-hundred-and-forty-two units on a residential light area. Adjacent next door to this is an industrial-zoned area, semi-trucks, semi-truck trailers, unbelievable amount of traffic. Un, if, if you look at Cape Cod Commission's study of Vision Zero, this is the second-most dangerous road in Howard. I know we're going to have a traffic study next meeting, I'll be there, but I'll just touch on that, make that point today. Most danger, second-most dangerous road in Howard. There's a lot I could talk about, but, um, development. Development in Howard needs to be redevelopment, close to resources needed by the residents. Residents, both young and old, need to be within walking distance of schools, medical service, libraries, grocery stores, shops, et cetera. POV has the understandable objective, but they have the wrong location, the wrong magnitude. There are parcels in East Howard, Howard Port, Howard Center that could combine both residential and commercial, that can be redeveloped at existing structures for housing, for low-cost and low-income housing. That's briefly my concerns here, and I appreciate your time to let me speak. Thank you.
My pleasure, thank you, sir. Was there anybody that, okay.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Harder, eighty-eight Pleasant Lake Avenue. I am your delegate to the Barnstable County Regional Government Assembly of Delegates. I am also the Chair of the Housing Committee and the Housing Authority. So you can tell I like housing. I am not speaking as, for the Assembly of Delegates. I can speak for the Housing Committee, because the Housing Committee thoroughly supports this project. We, at the Assembly, on June, uh, June, sorry, I'm tired. At the Assembly, on April sixteenth, we passed a resolution saying, designating housing on Cape Cod as a crisis. And it was reaffirmed by the county commissioners, passing that resolution yesterday. The statistics are unbelievable. I know you all bought your homes a while ago, you would not buy them now, you would not be able to. They're seven-hundred thousand dollars. And the problem is, the numbers don't lie. If we, we have no land, we have very little land. Eighty-six percent of the Cape is developed or protected. So where we do have areas like this, we must do density, because that's the only thing that's gonna save us. The, what changed the character of the Cape, frankly, is not what people wanna do with affordable housing today, it's the fact that years ago, you passed these zoning laws saying, big, single-family homes on one-acre lots. That's why it's the suburbs now. Look at the old areas of Cape Cod, they're smaller houses next together, where people have neighborhood, where you knew who lived down the street. You didn't have to drive to your neighbor. That's what this is going to be. This is going to be your neighbors, it's built by your neighbors. It's not some nameless developer trying to make a buck. These are your friends, your neighbors, these are some of the oldest families, knock it off.
Do we have no speaking while people are talking, please?
We've listened to you people for I don't know how long, denigrating this project. I understand you don't want it in your neighborhood, but I will tell you something. There are twelve thousand people in this town, and as the Chair of the Housing Committee, I can't tell you how many phone calls I get from people saying, "Oh, please support this." And do you know why those people aren't here? Because they can't afford to be. They are either at their third job that they have to take just so they can afford rent, or they're home with their kids because they can't afford childcare.
Your time is up, man.
This is serious. Please, it is a crisis. You think it's for the poor, it's not. It's for your neighbor.
Thank you. Donald Nickerson of sixteen, uh, Katie's Pond Lane, and, uh, after Donald, Paul Doan, sixty-sixty-three Main Street.
Good evening, Donald Chris Nickerson, Katie's Pond Lane, lived there thirty-three years, bought my house in nineteen ninety-one. Wife and I both worked three jobs back then, I was a town employee for the town of Howard, or for the employee for the town of Yarmouth. We both had to work, in nineteen ninety-one, both had to work three jobs. You made a comment earlier about concerning the board's popularity in this meeting. It's because we rely on you to help protect the integrity of our neighborhood. We can't do it unless we stand here and speak to you. That's why you have our popularity tonight. Nineteen nineties, early nineteen nineties, late eighty-nine, the town of Howard was required to do a massive remediation to Flax Pond, which is a neighbor, neighboring pond to this property, for nitrogen loading caused by the septic lagoons. When the lagoons were abandoned, I was a town employee at the transfer station. We spent tens of thousands of dollars to, to rescue that pond. May not be down gradient, but it's gonna be affected by this project and the affluent from the septic treatment plant. We are not the only state, town, or municipality in a housing crisis. There's a post on social media on both Howard pages tonight of somebody who did a nationwide search. There's a housing crisis in every town, city, and state in this country. We're not an albatross. And to, to echo select Ms. McCaskill's comments at the board meeting, let's not create a new emergency to address, address an existing one, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Following, Mr. Doan's gonna speak right now, but after that, John Chory, one-fifty-three Gorham Road.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, pleased to be here tonight and make some comments. I would urge the board to consider supporting the project as it's presented. This is actually my second time before the, uh, Pine Oaks, on a Pine Oaks proposal, before the zoning board. The last time was a mere forty-nine years ago, when I appeared, uh, seeking to establish Pine Oaks Village One. At the time, um, that proposal was, uh, like this one, very contentious. There were concerns about impact and so forth. Some newspaper articles had headlines like "Proposal Under Attack", "Multi-Family Zoning Draws Angry Blasts", and, uh, other comparable, uh, news reports indicating the concerns in the community that existed at the time. In the end, the town's planning board, the town zoning board, and the town meeting voters stepped up and actually allowed the project to, uh, go on as the Mid-Cape Church Home is Group had long fought for. I happened to be the president of the board, uh, back then. And, uh, I remain at this point the last surviving member of that original board. Not because of my lifestyle necessarily, but just because all the other board members were thirty-five or forty years older than I was. But we put together some units in Howard Port that are in the, uh, Bank Street area that have just been referred to as Ideal. And, and other people will speak tonight relative to, uh, uh, the affordable housing needs and so forth. I wanna stress three points in my comments. For over sixty years, and without exception, the succession of the Pine Oaks Boards has been comprised of local citizens overseeing experienced professional managers providing attractive, well-managed, aesthetically compatible, user-friendly, and affordable rental accommodations.
Thirty seconds, sir.
You can't find another decision-making board that knows more about the unique environment than these boards have known of the town of Howard. Secondly is its track record. I would ask you all to visit the three Pine Oaks villages that exist today and talk to the people and see the projects, and you'll see how attractive they are and how proud the inhabitants are of it. And finally, as a result of this negotiation process that begins tonight with the Pine Oaks proposal...
Three minutes, sir.
And allowing for the towns already approved and under consideration housing, this particular project will meet the town's...
Sir, you need to...
...requirement of ten percent.
Three minutes is up, sir.
Okay. And therefore, your board will have the approval or the ability to act positively or negatively for any future forty-B projects. Thank you very much.
After, it's, uh, Mr. Cherry, correct?
It's John Chory, yes.
Joy.
John Chory, uh, one-fifty-three Gorham Road.
And after him, John, uh, Marteira, uh, thirty, fifty-nine, I think, Queen Anne Road. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I have attended some of these meetings in the past, and, uh, what I'm gonna speak to about tonight, uh, within my time allotment, is some, a couple of questions have been brought up, uh, before by, by other folks. I'm all for affordable housing, I don't think there's anyone in this room that's against it. It's just the size of this project and the scope and a lot of unknowns that is, is daunting to folks. I've been to a lot of town meetings, I've spoken to a lot of boards, and I focus most of my attention on the financial aspect of projects in this town. I'd like to see a chapter, a page, or something, addressing what the impact of this project will be financially to the town. And some of the subjects I'd like to be, uh, incorporated in that piece of statement paper is... paper is, uh, the impacts of, of the fire, the medical group, uh, the police department, the DPW staff, uh, water demand. Uh, I think we're, uh, the town, uh, water department's about to issue a, a, a water drought, uh, ban on Monday. You know, what will this impact? The water, our table in this town. The projected school enrollment, that's the biggest one. I'd like to see a number of projected students enrolled in our school system, not for this one building, two building, but for the ten buildings that are projected for this project. We all have been reading recently the impact of schools, the maintenance of the buildings of the schools, they're tremendous. And I'd like to see the numbers attached to those, uh, they're in the millions is what I'm projecting at. What is, what is the projected number of inhabitants in these buildings? We hear of two hundred and forty-two units, but what does that equate to as far as people in these buildings? And, uh, next last one is the taxes. I believe Pine Oak presently pays fifty percent taxes on their, on their assessment right now. Is that gonna carry through to these projects in these buildings? Or are they gonna pay their full tax rate like all the citizens in town are paying? Thank you.
My name is John Marteira. I'm representing fifty-nine Queen Anne Road, Howard's Portuguese Men's Club. I wrote a letter to the board, and I think, obviously, it's been shared with the builders because they made reference to it. There's a serious issue with the land abutting, the, uh, the encroachment property line. There's at least one acre, maybe three to four acres taken from our property, and I just need to know how the board's gonna address that, and that's simply what we need to know. Uh, they made reference to, uh, land surveyor doing the work. We've had several land surveyors look at it, and they're coming up with different results. So is there gonna be a meeting or some way where we can get property line issues resolved?
That, that one, I'll just give a brief response. We don't believe their information is correct. We have had it surveyed, um, and what's most important is that case law is legion on the fact that title disputes are not something that the zoning board does in the course of an application. So I believe we tried to talk to them, we can talk, but respectfully, we just don't think that they're correct, and it also simply isn't a matter for the board. Thank you.
I think your comments on that, I, I appreciate that. I would, myself, would want to, you know, check that out. I do know that one of our hearings is regarding overall site plan, and perhaps that can be addressed during that meeting. Is that correct?
Sure, you know, we can respond. I just wanted to.
Okay.
State what I said.
We would love to have our professional land surveyor sit with yours.
Well, at, uh, at an appropriate meeting, um, an outside company could come in and, uh, be represented and have time to do that. First, I would like to make sure when that happens that you, they, uh, prior, contact the board, contacted Rachel and, uh, the, uh, Board Appeals, indicate it's being requested. And then we'll see how we can manage that and, and check with our consultant to see if that would be proper to have another outside consultant come in. So that, that'd be fine. We want, this board wants as, as much possible information as we can, we can gather to help us assess, you know, the, this, this application. And again, I want to stress that there'll be multiple opportunities at all of our meetings for public comment. Now, uh, it's quarter nine. Caleb, was there anybody else online that wanted to speak?
I've not received any more messages.
Okay. Now that, is there somebody new wants to speak?
Yeah, I didn't write down.
That's fine, cause why don't you go ahead?
If there's no one else, then.
There's no one else, please step forward, sir. And, uh, and then actually, uh, Mr. Uh, Nunes, I had cut you off. We'll have time if you'd like to, uh, complete your, your, um, opinion. It's, it's fine as we're gonna have time, okay? All right, go ahead, sir.
So you didn't have my name right written on the page, so my first name is James, last name Pena, P-E-N-A, born and raised in Howard.
And your address, sir?
Four nine five Main Street.
Okay, thank you.
A part of the village that's been there for, I would say, one hundred and ten years, Main Street, what used to be called Kelly Street, okay? Um, the reason that I would like to stand up is to say that North Howard's has taken, as Barry had mentioned, a lot of the things that the town needs to do, okay? None of us are against, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but personally, I'm not against affordable housing, but the scope and magnitude of this project is very concerning, from a traffic standpoint, from a safety standpoint, from a environmental standpoint, and everything else. And I do take exception to someone who says that you people want to go against this project. Us people are the ones who live in this area. The people who are saying you people may not live in that area and may not be impacted, so it's just fine for it to be happening in North Howard, okay? But more importantly, I would like to state that I believe that the magnitude of this is excessively large. Under the guise of 40B, they have asked for waivers on parking, on the sizes and heights, which are gonna affect the local population, on the zoning, on the environmental, on the safety. Look at the nine waivers that they have. Every single thing that would affect the local community is being asked to be waived, okay? And it's being done under the guise of 40B, which the state will then put you guys under the problem of justify why that can't be okay, all right? If this was done anywhere else in the town, it would never take place, okay? Height, environmental, any of these sorts of things are problematic. And I look forward to the, the eighteenth meeting on the traffic assessment because we all know who live there that this is crazy already. We already know that the one twenty-four and Queen Anne, uh, intersection is already under stress without even this project being inserted into it. There are only three or four places that this project can empty out, and there's no place in this project for these kids to be able to say. They say they've got a, 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 a area for them and everything. I was a kid, I ride a bike, I like to get out, you know what I mean? They're gonna be there. And do you want this kid to be riding on Queen Anne Road on a bicycle?
Thirty seconds.
With no bike path or no paths or anything else? The safety, and someone mentioned earlier that Queen Anne is, happens to be one of the worst air, you know, streets in the world. You're just asking for it to happen. So I believe that there are serious safety and environmental problems with the scope of it. Scale it down, and I think everybody here is gonna be fine. You know what I mean? So I just want to say that it's not about not wanting it there. It's just, I believe that they've done everything they can, and all of the waivers that they've asked for is to jam as many units into this space as they possibly care. There's not enough parking spaces. They've already taken exception to that.
Sir?
Time?
Time's up.
Okay.
I appreciate that, but, well, Mayor, you may have a chance to finish things up in a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I want to take in order, um, I need to, uh, Mr. Nunes spoke first, Elizabeth, so if there's time after he comes back up.
There's another.
Did you want to? Oh, have you spoken yet? Oh, please take the.
Oh, I, I thought that I was the, you know, my bad.
You're gonna wrap up the rest of the night?
I thought everybody was exhausted, so that, that's why I came.
Excellent comments, and thank you.
Hello, I'm Sherri Stockdale. I live on Main Street, and somebody asked about the full capacity of Pine Oaks. Well, with eighty-two one-bedroom units with two occupants, that would be a hundred and sixty-four people. With a hundred and thirty-seven two-bedroom units with four people, that would be five hundred and forty-eight. With twenty-nine three-bedroom units with six people, that would be one seventy-four for a total of eight hundred and eighty-six at full capacity. And that's before you even consider the non-40B units that could be built along Ennisus Road. So you're looking at close to a thousand people over the course of ten years. The parking lot is enormous. If you've ever been to Marconi Beach in Wellfleet and seen that parking lot, that's what you're talking about. And I just have to say that comparing this project to previous 40Bs is just ludicrous. You've got a sixty-unit, single-story on Bank Street, you've got thirty-eight unit, single-story on Bank Street, sixty-eight ground-level homes on Oak Street. You're talking three and a half stories, ten enormous buildings. It's just, it's too big for this area, and I have to reiterate, when, before we realized the size of it, we were for it. We're for affordable housing, despite the fact that there's, there are two other affordable projects going in in North Howard. So it's not like we're saying not in our backyard, we're just saying really everything in our backyard? Is that really good planning? Because even though the Housing Committee supports this project, the housing production plan that was developed over months and months with hours and hours of time and energy says otherwise. It says that housing should be dispersed throughout the town, not all loaded up in one area. Because what you're doing there is you're just creating this worker warehousing, it's all rental, and you're not giving people a chance to build equity, so you're not building a community. And really, what you're doing is you're breaking up the existing community. People have already started putting their houses on the market for fear of what this is gonna do. They don't want to watch this happen, and they are selling homes that have been in the family for, for decades. So you're taking what's actually a working-class area, the people that do the jobs to help this town, and you're breaking that up and diminishing it and diminishing property values to put something else in there that you think is going to do what is already being done by the people that live in this community. So.
Thirty seconds.
And I would just say that the fact that all of these units get added to the shy list despite the fact that they're not affordable, what a farce. I thought we really wanted to build affordable housing, not just say that we were building affordable housing so that the rest of the town can be off the hook and not have to worry about this happening in their backyard. Because everyone I've looked at, letters from people who are pro Pine Oaks Village, they don't live in North Howard, they live in Howard Center, they live in Howardport. It's really easy to tell other people what they should be willing to put up with when you yourself do not have to put up with it. So, I'm done.
Then Elizabeth, after Mr. Nunes, and you can speak.
I'll be brief, like twenty seconds.
Okay, well.
You have three minutes.
You can go with.
I just want to say that I'm not against affordable housing. I'm not. It's just that this project is just too big. It's too big for the area. The impact in North Howard is gonna be enormous, and the traffic is a pain. Like I've said, uh, I get cut off every week, every week, when I leave my driveway and go down Main Street. Uh, and I can't imagine, uh, I think it was figured out there'd be over two thousand, I had it here somewhere. Anyway, the traffic would be over two thousand vehicles weekly in that area. It's insane. And this is an old neighborhood, it's one of, it's an old neighborhood. The houses, if you look, a lot of them are brick on the bottom. It's just an old neighborhood. The road is not equipped to handle that traffic. There are no sidewalks, you can't walk your dogs. You, you can't, you don't even want to walk on Main Street, never mind, uh, Depot Street. So I'm just saying, please recognize the impact this is gonna have on, on the community of North Howard and the people who live there, who love that area. And my family's been there for over a hundred years, and I love the area, and I, I'd like to see it preserved somewhat. It's changed a lot. Please, please consider that, the impact on, on the people of North Howard. Thank you.
For your comments. Appreciate you getting back up to finish your, your, your opinion. Thank you. Look, you could restate your name, we all know.
Elizabeth Harter, Harroward Center, again. I apologize to the gentleman, I lost my temper. I did not mean everyone who is against this project. What I mean is there is a core group of people who talk during meetings, who only hear what they want to hear. They don't listen. They get up here and they repeat lies that they have been told over and over and over again are lies. So I just want to make a couple of points clear. This year, the average median income, and let me explain, because most people don't know what that is. The average median income is the average medium of what people in a region make, and that's what we call the AMI. So affordable housing is eighty percent AMI or under, right? The median AMI, just came out from HUD for Barnstable County, is a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, which means that someone with eighty percent AMI, that's capital A affordable, has to make seventy-four thousand. Now, who makes that money? Our firemen, our police off, firefighters, our police officers, our teachers. Now, we're not gonna need teachers because you talk about the cost of the schools. We don't have any kids. We lose a thousand families every year because they can't afford to live here. Look at the average age in this room. I mean, I'm sorry, we're not gonna have to worry about how much it adds to the police department because we won't have police officers. They'll be living across the bridge. Same with firefighters. That's who we're talking about here. And I know that road is a nightmare, I have to drive it every day, and it's gonna be, it's a nightmare now, and it needs to be fixed now. And it's gonna be even better if you have this project because the state has to pay for it, if it's a road project that helps affordable housing. So the problems that you have, I beg you to really look, really read, really listen, and see where it's gonna be, how it's gonna affect you. If anything, I think it's gonna make that area nicer and easier to drive, because that place scares me to death now.
Thirty seconds.
So it does need to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard tonight? Yes.
Hi, Denise Montgomery. I live at six Queen Anne Road. So we're the very first house on Queen Anne Road, right at the corner of Queen Anne and Main. I did not grow up here. I don't have anything prepared. I'm just gonna speak from my heart. I love living in North Howard. For any of you who drove by our house maybe six or seven years ago, you may have seen it lifted in the air. It's not because we bought the property, wanted to tear it down and build some sort of McMansion. We wanted to preserve our home. We spent hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars to do so, and we continue to do so, and that property is really important to us. I sit on my screen porch in the afternoon. I'm, I'm lucky, I work from home, but, uh, the traffic that goes by there early in the morning from three o'clock in the afternoon, it's insane. And I have actually walked down Queen Anne Road to pick up my car at Richie's garage before, so I know what it's like to walk Queen Anne Road. It's, it's, it's terrifying. Also, in addition, I'm not gonna echo what everybody's already said about traffic. Enough people have said enough about it. I know there's gonna be a traffic hearing as well. But with traffic also comes trash. I can't tell you how many nips, uh, food containers, I mean, all kinds of trash end up in our yard, which I have to monitor all the time, which eventually will end up in the river if I don't. And it's a lot to keep track of. So I'm concerned about that as well, um, and then ultimately concerned about the river itself. So, um, I just, I just think, again, this, this project is too big. I'm also not against affordable housing. I know, I understand that we need it, um, and I encourage younger families to be living here. We do need kids, and I agree with that. But again, it sounds like North Howard's has taken the brunt of a lot over the years, long before I moved here. I moved here ten years ago, but, um, I hate to see it continue to take the brunt of, of what Howard needs to support. So that's all I have. Thanks for letting me.
Thank you very much. Well, I want to thank you all for the cooperation, meaning my nine o'clock deadline for, for speakers, but, um, at this point, what I'd like to do, if there's nobody else, needs to be heard, and, and Caleb, is nobody online? Is that correct?
Not received any.
Okay. It's, uh, next up is just a general discussion between, you know, our board, perhaps the applicant as well, but first. Did the gentleman over there want to finish? Oh, did you want, do you have any thoughts to finish up, sir?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thanks. Sure, all right.
I don't need one, walk all the way over there.
Yeah, you actually have to, sir. Hope you don't mind.
I didn't want to walk this far.
You'll thank me when you read your steps tonight.
My age, it's all a walk. I've been a resident, a legal resident of North Harwich for seventy-five years. I'm eighty-two years old. I don't see too many of you gentlemen in that, in my category. But I'll tell you one thing. We're the same age?
No, no, no. I'm seven years younger.
Oh, okay. All right. I've seen North Harwich. From when I went to school, was no man's land. You live in North Harwich? Oh, it's crazy. But I've seen what's happened. I've seen the people that have moved there. I live in an area where things were rough back in the seventies when farmers' homes was a big deal. And they came in, people purchased houses in there, became part of the workforce of the town. And you can come in my neighborhood and look and see what's going on. Two hundred and forty-two units in that area is going to kill us. It's going to take away everything that the people in North Harwich have worked for. As a kid, that stream, it's a stream now, was a river, was loaded with heroin. There's, there's no heroin running there, nothing. What, you're going to change the whole complex of North Harwich as far as a working person home. Mr. Dome got up here and spoke eloquently. He lives in Harwich Center. He doesn't even know what North Harwich is. North Harwich was no man's land when he was coming up, when he was going to school. And Mr. Dome here, he doesn't, he probably doesn't know who I am, but I know who he is. I knew his mother. That's, that's going that far back. Let's keep North Harwich the way North Harwich is. Other thing you have to remember, they're going to take the nursing home in Dennis that's going to be changed over through Dennis. Where, how, where are those people going to exit from? Main Street extension to Depot Street intersection. That's where that's proposed to happen. So not only are you talking about people that are going into this project, but you've got another project right over the town line that more traffic is going to come into that North Harwich area. Thank you for your time.
So I'm trying to get things done by nine, ten. We have, I think, one more speaker online. Is that correct, Caleb? I see Michael McGasco would like to speak. He already spoke.
That was earlier.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Thank you. I apologize.
Mr. Tim?
Yes.
I'll keep it very brief. I feel obligated to correct the record. Earlier, it was mentioned that, that our shy list number was down in the four percent. I just want to point out to the, to the board that we have several active projects right now, including the Marseline project, which is upscale, that will add to that shy list. We're also undergoing an extensive evaluation on properties that have recently, in the past two years, dropped off the shy list, but have not come forward to pay their full, full share of taxes. So we're in negotiations right now with several people that have dropped off the shy list on whether or not they want to stay on it. So we really should be still in the six percent. So using that ten percent fake number that the state has come up with, you know, at a detriment to communities, I would urge the board to look at Barnstable, Hyannis, Yarmouth, and look at the fact that they raced to get to their ten percent number. And now that there's, now they're saying that they've overdeveloped. And to a previous speaker who represented themselves as, as being on many, many boards and what they support, as you and your board are well aware, no one member represents a board. So it was a misrepresentation of the town of Harwich tonight to talk about what a committee represents. One that was not a vote of the committee is, in fact, a misrepresentation to the town. I won't talk about the detriments anymore, but there's plenty of, plenty of statistics out there on where we actually are and actually will be on the shy list. But we shouldn't be racing to ruining the town of Harwich like other towns have just because the Barnstable County delegates talk about a crisis and the commission backs them up. Because the state, in this nineteen sixty-nine law, has destroyed many communities with poor planning. The housing crisis was created by poor planning. And now we're being asked by our representatives on the county level and the state level to create that same crisis in town. And I know what you all need to do to make your decision, and you need to follow the law. But there's a lot to this. And just because you talk loud, and I'm not talking about the committee, I'm talking about previous speaker, just because you talk loud does not make you smarter. Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you all. And at this time, I do want to ask the applicant if you, if you have any questions you want to address at this point that were asked. Otherwise, we're just going to get into other, general discussion with Judy Barrett, our consultant.
Just a brief point, which I'll also put in our written responses, but you may already know, but aside from the fact that in reality, projects don't add that many students, but it's forbidden, it's not an issue under 40B. The case law is clear. The guidelines under the state are clear. You can't consider impact of schoolchildren.
All right, thank you. Okay, that addresses the public comment period. I'd like to just, just have a motion for, I'd like to motion to the public comment period and end that now. Can I have a second? Get all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next step is any questions that, Judy? Of course, this is the first time the board's had an opportunity to, to meet with you. I'd like to just first, first of all, do you have any final, any comments after the, Judy, that you'd like to make before we ask you any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No.
No, I meant, I was asking Judy. But that's quite all right.
You're looking at the screen. I'm not.
I'd rather look at Judy, but that's all right. So Judy, have any, are there any comments you'd like to make?
Um, no, I mean, actually, I thought that was pretty much what I anticipated for the first meeting. I think everyone's comments were, you know, well-intended and hopefully will be helpful to the board going forward. So I don't have anything to add at this point. I thought that was all fine.
Okay, thank you. Now, are there any questions from the board to Judy?
I have none.
I guess the, the one question that I have is that I know during the process, and we're going to have the peer reviews done by outside consultants, I'm assuming these consultants are going to be judging the proposal probably based upon state regulatory boards and committees and, and the state requirements. And I could be wrong about that, but I believe that's what it's going to be doing. During the process, I personally, you know, at each topic meeting, will want to hear from those that, that like to come forward and speak, from our own town department heads, whether it's conservation, perhaps, you know, fire department, safety, highway, those that want to address and, and speak, you know, to the committee regarding what they consider the impact on the town might be, as well as their considerations of the plans that have been presented, you know, by folks at Pine Oaks Village. Because it, I know what we're going to be, obviously, considering the consultant's viewpoint, as well as the reports that we have from the applicant. But I'd like to have the take from the people in this town in, in the town hall and the committee members that they know the town best and have looked at this proposal and get their viewpoints as well. So how should that be handled best, Judy, regarding when we have our topic discussions?
So, you know, I don't know what the tradition is in your town. I generally don't see town department heads or staff attending many ZBA meetings. I do see memos, you know, comments, written comments to the board, which I think frankly are probably the most helpful. Sometimes a public safety official might address the board, but for the most part, I think what you really need is the input from, you know, your, your town departments that would typically be involved in reviewing any other development. So if I can be of some assistance in maybe trying to organize a meeting with those staff, I'd be happy to do that. But if you already have a system in place for, like, interdepartmental development review, I would definitely get that going. I mean, you do need input from your, your town staff. There's no question about it. In some communities I work in, the peer review consultants might also meet with the town staff just so everybody kind of understands the parameters for review. Under 40B, it's not like town departments do this every day. So that might be another avenue as well.
For me, one of the principal ones would, I mean, everything's important on this presentation, whether it's site plans.
Sure.
One of the principal ones for me would be conservation, environmental, and so forth of the site. And should our conservation agent make herself available, I would probably like to be able to fit her in if she's willing to come to a meeting, you know, to discuss the town's viewpoint regarding her, her department. But those are my questions. Did anybody have any further comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Just to interject the thought on that, and I, and I heartily agree. That's something we tried to do in advance. But we could do it now as well. Most towns I work with let us meet, you know, even during the course of the pending hearing, informally, with staff. If Judy and Christine perhaps could help organize a meeting that we would also attend, we'd be happy to do that. That's number one. Number two, the discussion reminds me there is one question slash suggestion, I will state, which is, in the course of the peer review, it's usually helpful if you authorize your peer review consultant to actually talk directly with our professional, our engineer, or whoever it is. And, you know, they would use their own judgment naturally. But rather than have no communication, it is less expeditious to just have to respond at a hearing and have no communication with those experts, yours and ours. So I would ask if you can okay that.
Well, I suppose it may be a discussion for the board, but I feel the fact that a consultant speaking to everyone that's involved in the project and getting, sitting down with you personally and your, in your team, to get your viewpoint to best understand your plans. The idea is to best understand the plans so they can make an informed decision. So would you agree with that, Judy?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, I agree with Attorney Freeman. It makes eminent sense, bearing in mind that you also have, you know, a certain period within which you have to conclude this hearing. It makes absolute sense for the applicant's consultants to be able to speak with the board's consultants so that when you get together on, on June 18th, there's going to be a possibility for a productive discussion. So I would definitely encourage that.
Christine, can you take the opportunity to contact VHB and let them know that it's been a request? That they, you know, take the opportunity to meet with the, the appropriate consultant or official with, with Pine Oaks Village? I appreciate that. Well, if there's not any other further discussion, go ahead. I'm sorry, Tim.
Yes, I just have two things. So the applicant's attorney said that school enrollment and then the survey issue or question between the applicant and a butters is not in the purview of the board. Could we have confirmation on that? I want to, you know, hear it either from, would that be from Ms. Barrett or from our attorney?
Well, first of all, Judy, do I take a swipe at that?
Yeah, I most certainly would. The statute's very clear about what the board's jurisdiction is. It's public health, it's public safety, environmental impact, building and site design. It's the physical parameters of the project. The board does not have jurisdiction or authority to consider or impose conditions on a project that relate to municipal operations, police, fire, schools. That's not in the board's purview, and I would encourage you not to go there. It's just beyond anything that you can regulate. So focus on what you do have authority over. That's the most productive way to get through a 40B hearing.
Understood. Great. Thank you.